Call meeting ordered. It's 10:00 AM on Wednesday, January 4th. Meeting along with county commissions. It's hereby called order. Can you hear me now? Okay. Before I ask you to please stand for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of the flag, I'd ask that in your moment of silent meditation if you would keep Tony Burrell and his family in your thoughts.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be pipped.
Renata.
Consent approval. We have exonerations, 23 listings for $7,011.80, textures 2011, 12, and 13, fiduciary orders for January 15th and 2029th, 2014, fourth quarter 2013 fiduciary commissioner report from George Armistead, and third quarter report from Cynthia Stafford. Minutes from December the 4th and December the 11th, 2013. Also have vouchers, general county fund expenditures, $60,000, 46810, coal severance, $41,000, 22841, magistrate court, $34.99, 911 cash, $1,0084916, Chestnut Ridge Park, $4,839.29, home confinement, $1,083.45, Mason Dixon Park, $23539, assessors valuation, $3,058.56, sheriff's forfeiture, $2,750, for total of $1,15,547.35. No miscellaneous bonds, and we have three budget revisions for the sheriff's office, for law enforcement, jail reimbursable, and home confinement.
Move for approval. Second, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Stumpf.
Morning. My name is John Stumpf. I'm attorney with the law firm, Stephanie Johnson. And I didn't stay. I stayed at Waterfront Place last night, but I'm playing Tom Ammon today. Let's just put it that way. It wasn't a Holiday Inn Express, but we'll work on it.
Did he tell you about our smile rule?
No. Do you have a smile rule for Tom?
Yeah, we had to indoctrinate him into a smile.
Tom's a little, Tom's a little serious.
Really?
He's a little straight-laced, yeah.
But he does exceptional work.
He's a great guy.
And he has learned his mouth.
Before you get your presentation, let me just ask you a quick question.
Sure, of course.
Is this the same resolution that Tom had presented us previously, only he filled in some blanks?
No, Tom presented you with a resolution that was a reimbursement resolution.
Oh, okay.
Which protected your ability to reimburse yourself from bond proceeds. This ordinance, actually, we have to call it an ordinance, and I know that's odd for the county commission to have a, well, a resolution and order. By statute, we have to call it resolution and an order. What this authorizes is the leasing of the Staggers Building from the building commission, as well as, well, first, it authorizes the transfer of the property to the building commission, and then the leasing back of the property from the building commission to the county commission. Now, this is not for consideration today. This is not first reading. This is, I'm merely here to explain what's going on, what the process is, and you all have work session this afternoon. If you all want to take this up and you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. But I just want to make you aware of it. Now, the building commission is having their first meeting today at 11:30. Now, they have to have three meetings total, whereas the county commission only has to have two.
Two public meetings.
Well, two meetings, two readings. Two readings, right.
There's no public hearing before?
Not for the county commission.
Okay.
It's the building commission.
Right. Well, they have three public hearings?
They have three meetings and a public hearing at the last.
Okay, thank you.
Right, no problem. So, and we'll take care of all that. But this, again, is just for informational purposes only. We didn't want to drop it on you next week and not having seen it. And also, I'll also let you know that we'll have on the agenda for next week approval to move forward with title insurance and survey work on the Staggers Building, because we're going to have to have that in order to secure the bondholders.
You realize that we have to get, until December this year, we have to get GSA approval to make any transfer?
No, I did not know that. That's good. That's good information, though. That's important. That's a biggie.
Part of the purchase, we are not allowed to transfer it to anyone for a period of three years.
I thought it was two.
Three, is what? Diane, Diane thought it was December of this year, but she looked it up formally, and she says it's December of 2013. She thought it was December 2013, but she looked it up, and it's December of 2014.
I recall during the purchasing process that it was, two years was thrown out as the period of time that we would have to retain that building, if there was ever any thoughts of.
I didn't look it up. She just emailed me a couple of weeks ago that it was.
It was three years process.
Was December of 2014 that we can transfer without GSA approval.
December of 2014, okay. Well, we need to transfer it decidedly sooner than that.
Well, I think we were also told that we can ask GSA for the authorization and transfer of the ownership.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, then give us a waiver. I was just wondering. We're going to have to get a waiver.
Yeah, I did not know that. That's good to know. So, we're going to have to get started on that right away. I mean, I know it seems like they've been pretty good for you all to work with on this project, and we wouldn't want a government shutdown or something to slow the project down. So, thank you all.
True.
Very, very good information. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the structure or anything like that of the legal structure. But that's the process. Tom will be here next Wednesday, and he's going to be here shortly for the UTC project.
If we could just get, just for, not for clarification, but after they meet, the building commission meets today, if they could also tell us when they set up the next two meetings, especially the public meeting, ahead of time, then we could get that to the media, just so, you know, so they have that information ahead of time.
And that's a call, and that's a conversation I will have with them.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, the next reading, if possible, if we can get people out for it, and if he's available, will be next Wednesday. We'll just do it in conjunction with your all's reading.
Oh, okay.
I mean, not at the same time.
Right.
Right afterwards, out in hallway or whatever. And then we'll, and then we'll need to have two weeks at least in between till it's out for publication.
Okay.
One of the other things, just to make sure, that Tom or someone will do the communication with GSA?
Well, yeah, we will do that. We just need to have the information to make that, the person, and Bob, do you know, do you have the person at GSA who we would contact, or at least we could start with on this waiver process?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, if you can get that to Tom and I, or I can get it from you now, whatever, we will, yeah, we'll make that, that letter will go out tomorrow, because I want to get that, I want to get that moving.
The second thing that I would ask for is a projected timetable.
Mm-hmm.
Because we have already have a contractor selected.
Sure, sure.
And I think that's with a 90-day.
It is.
Implementation.
Bit hold was 90 days.
And I think for everyone's sake, we need to know what our timetable is going to be, you know, so that we know when we can start the actual construction or renovations, and we can set some kind of timeframe for when that project will be completed.
Right. I think that March 15 is within the 90-day period, and that's what is targeted as a closing date. You know, we were going to have a meeting last week, but because of weather and everything else, weren't able to do it, so it pushed us a week. We're still going to be within the 90-day bit hold, and may be able to do it sooner than March 15.
Okay.
That's just right now. No, I understand the significance of the 90-day bit hold completely. I've talked to Tom Potts at Sealing. I understand where we are, and we actually issued, prepared a notice of, notice of, notification of lowest qualified bidder to the company Mascaro, I think it's called, Masaro.
Mascaro.
I'm sorry, Mascaro. And let them know, you know, they're the lowest qualified bidder. And so, they're proceeding, getting their stuff done, the payment performance bonds, insurance, and all that sort of thing that'll have to be reviewed. So, and then Tom can do the construction contracts, but those should be AIA forms, so American Association of Architect forms, so it shouldn't be anything out of the ordinary, I would think.
Yeah, I think probably standard.
Yeah, that should be. I hope so. I don't want you to need, there's a reason those are written that way.
That's all the questions I have at this time.
Me, too.
Appreciate your work.
Okay. Mr. Bartola, would it be appropriate for one of the judges to ask you a question on this matter?
It would be a little bit out of normal procedures, but I don't really see any major problem with it, if there's no objection.
Sure.
Do I understand that we're proceeding, and everything should be ready to go with construction to begin on March 15, or thereabout?
Yes, Your Honor. We will have the financing closed by March 15, which will then allow the county commission to sign construction contracts. So, I'd say April 1, realistically, they'll start construction.
Okay. I noticed that during the work session later today, there's going to be discussion about selling the federal building, and that was concerning to me, while we're doing all of this, that we're still thinking about selling the federal building.
That's not the issue, Judge.
That's what it says, discussion of selling.
Well, we can't discuss it. We don't do anything in secret here. We don't do backroom discussions. We do things out in open. We have, I have been approached by a number of people, and I know a couple of the other commissioners have, that while we're spending $20 million for a third courtroom, and that there's been conversation that we can get $15 million out of that building and build what we need right back here. Now, none of us say we're in favor of that, but we have an obligation as stores of the money of this county, when someone brings up an alternative idea, to discuss it in open forum. That's why that's on there. We're going to have public hearings. You already heard, there's going to be meetings, and there's going to be public hearings. The people know what, need to know what issues. Before that is discussed, before any of us take it and discuss it with any third party, the three of us, out of respect for one another, discuss it in open, public comment. We don't cut anyone off, and we don't degrade anyone. That was an issue that was brought up. That's an issue the people need to know. They need to know that water projects are going to stop, that, I got, just came from Charleston, the report from the governor's office, the report from the House office, the report from Senate President's office. All three of them said federal money for the next two to three years is done. We're not getting any federal money. State money has stopped. Matter of fact, they're be cutting money to the counties, so county budgets are going to go down. We have been, we have been successful here in county, but to just assume automatically that we're, we face a debt crisis, it is just erroneous, and it's our, our three's obligation to make sure that's not a problem. It's also our obligation, and I don't care who it is, one citizen comes up and says, "I think you want to talk about this." It is our obligation to talk about it among the three of us, because there's no king here. It's the three of us together. That's why it's on there.
Okay, well, I think you can probably understand my concern as chief judge, and I made it known to the commission that all the work this project is to me. It's not one more courtroom. It's bringing our judicial system into the 21st century, all right?
Well, I understand that, Judge.
Excuse me, may I finish?
Yes, I understand.
And so, I think it's just civil courtesy that when there's discussion about selling the federal building, that those that are going, likely to be affected by the selling of the federal building knows that this is going to be discussed. Now, I see this in the agenda. I don't get the agenda. All I know is that for the judges to get any information on this federal building project has been very difficult, to say the least. Now, I spoke with you earlier today, and because of my concern, you thought I was arrogant and egotistical, and because I'm interested in this project.
Wait, wait, let me stop you right there. Let me stop you right there. When someone says to me, now, listen here, young man.
No, I didn't say.
Yes, you did say that.
I wouldn't call you a young man.
You called me exactly, young man, and there's witnesses that were sitting in my office.
I'm not going to argue with you.
No, no. You cannot argue that point. You're the one that hung up on me, sir. I tried to, I tried to talk to you.
I did, but you got rid of me.
Okay, guys, let's. Let me in, be here a minute. You know, I think this is, subject is certainly worthy of discussion.
It will be.
And it will be in the work session. Please understand that there's no decisions made. Please understand that there is no preform even on all three commissioners, as far as I know, any interest in selling the federal building. Now, the discussion will be open, and I would certainly think at that time we would allow anyone that would have a comment that could provide.
I would hope that the commission would recognize that the interest of the judiciary in this building is significant. And I'm also note that those in Charleston, the Supreme Court considers this to be a significant event for Montague County and for the state of West Virginia. And simply by inquiring whether there's discussion, there's serious discussion about selling the federal building, is not a hope considered by the commission to be arrogance on that part of chief judge, or some egotistical moment that I might have. Now, I, I'm, this commission knows that I'm passionate about this project, not for me, but for the, but for the people of this county, because it's time that we bring the judiciary into the 21st century in this county. That's all. So, if I made inquiry, I would hope that I would get a reasonable response from someone about a simple inquiry, is if there's any, if there's any serious discussion about selling the federal building.
Just for a clarification, thank you, Your Honor. To give you an idea, on the agenda also at 3 o'clock is a discussion about WU campus housing. Now, they've already started the building of it. There seems to be some questions and concerns right now by people in the community, so that's why we put it on the agenda to here. So, that's basically what we're trying to do, and hopefully, you know, we can get these issues resolved. And clearly, that's what we're trying to do.
And I understand that.
Okay.
And that's clear to me now.
Okay.
But, but the response that I got earlier wasn't clear to me, and I was quite finished with that.
Well, yeah, so, just miscommunication.
One other thing. I don't care who you are. You called me a young man and tried to put me down and degrade me, like you did over my, my projection of how much this project would cost down here, $20 million. You stood right back there and did it. I won't take it. I don't care who you are. I don't care if you're the governor. I don't care if you're king. I don't care who you are. I will not be degraded.
Well, all there is.
And I expect an apology from you for the way you acted.
The one thing that I would like to bring to both attentions, please, is that this subject is not even on the agenda. It's on for the work session. And none of us were privileged to any conversation between Your Honor and Commissioner Cowan. So, we're sort of in the dark here in terms of what this discussion is going on.
I'm used to it.
And so, what I would hope is that we could continue it in our work session, and.
Clarify.
And I understand, Judge, I'd just like to sort of give you, I understand your concerns, because I understand the reason why we purchased that building in the beginning. And I can assure you that before any decision is made to sell that building, that there's going to be very thorough discussion, if, if any decision is ever reached to sell that building.
All right. Well, thank you for here.
Appreciate you for showing up. We'll see you later. Thank you.
Pace is canceled. Renata grants.
Okay, now, you're going to make up for last, because we didn't have a meeting last week.
Oh, no.
We'll get the reimbursements out of the way first. The first one, you don't actually have to sign it, but we did an electronic transaction with the Department of Justice for the drug court program for October 2013 through December of 2013, $22,198.62. Governor's Community Participation Grant Program for Main Street Morgantown, $12,000. We also have Bureau of Senior Services for Triune Community Center. We got the carpet done. Jamie and I went out and looked at it. It looks great, so we're going to pay, go ahead and pay the bill and get the reimbursements from the grant.
Are they happy?
Yes, they're happy.
That's where they're true.
Okay, there's three of those.
Do we want to do them on an individual basis?
We'll do the reimbursements at one time, and then we'll do the other.
No problem.
We have the HUD grant for December 2013, $822.80, and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program for RDVIC, Caritas House and the Bartlett House, $3,341.03. And we also have the JABG grant for MAYSP for December 2013. The first one is $782.80, the second is $108.63, and that's all the reimbursements I have today.
Move for acceptance of the reimbursements.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, we also have the contract for the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program for the Mont County Sheriff's Department for program materials for the beer program. Just request the president's signature.
Move for acceptance.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The last thing I have is the HUD grant, Community Development Block Grant. It's through Morgantown. They're the recipient of the grant. We are a sub-recipient for MAYSP. They're requesting $11,950, and we are the pass-through for MAYSP.
Good. Move for approval.
Second. I have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Tom Ammon, is he here yet?
Tom? Yes.
What about representatives of Pace for check?
No, they canceled.
They canceled. There's no school today.
Oh, there's no school again today?
No, teachers went.
Just the staff after a push.
Biodiesel fuel.
You have my partner still around?
He was there. The judges may have dragged him out.
Yeah, yeah. He ran off real fast.
Let me hand out a couple of things to you guys.
Oh, good.
I need to confer with him.
Okay.
Now, he has talked to us previously.
About the.
The other.
The, yeah.
Transfer of ownership.
The book again.
Okay. Do we want to move on to, like, unfinished business, though, though, since it's not temporary?
I want to, I want to, just for Renata.
Okay, we're going to move, we're going to move on in our agenda, and then we'll get back to you, Tom. Correspondence. Unfinished business. Dissolve technical review, of course, that involves.
Yeah, so we better go next. Why do we have to formally dissolve it?
Because you formally made it.
Yeah, but I mean.
It's a new group is formed.
The design bill is.
The design bill, technical, is dissolved.
Oh, somebody else is all mess.
Yeah, I remember there's that new group.
I think Bobby was going to speak to.
We lost Bobby, too?
Yeah.
The judges dragged him off, too? Man, they ought to at least respect our agenda.
Okay, let's move on to DOH agreement for replacement of Hartman and Judge. Long overdue.
Yes.
I guess everybody's had a chance to look over it, and we have a recommendation, I think, from Phil Maygro, that it's.
That's written back.
Yeah.
It's a good agreement.
Yeah, it covered all the things we talked about. I read it again in its final form this morning. We give them the $500,000. We give the second $500,000 at the end of this month, and we get it paid back on the city of Morgantown. They, they will, upon signing, and the first $500,000, they will prepare, they will prepare the transfer documents, and they intend to immediately seek contracts on it. The $1 million will be placed into an escrow account, and then to pay the 20%. If the 20% turns out to be less than $1 million after the project is completed, will be refunded the difference. If it turns out to be more, if the cost, the 20% is more than $1 million, we don't have to pay any more than $1 million. So, it covered everything we wanted, so I would move, we approve it and authorize the president to sign the second.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. How was it? Engagement letter for crews and associates, investment bankers for justice, sender bond issue.
Mr. Sefton prepared that.
Have you all seen this?
No, I read it.
You have read it?
I've read it. I read it this morning.
Okay. Any concerns or questions?
Not really. There was, this might be the right time to do it. There was some, some question raised to me about some of the questions I asked, and I wanted to assure Piper Jeffrey that those were not my questions. Those were questions submitted to us in email, and the position was that if the bonds are so much, then there's something wrong, and you shouldn't do that, and I wanted, all I wanted was your, whether you agreed with those things in the email. So, if there was any feeling that, that those ideas came up from me, they weren't. They came from someone else, and I wasn't accusing anybody of anyone. I was, as you can see, I just ask questions. And I don't mean disrespect to anyone, and if someone feels that way, I certainly apologize to that. But Judge Guzio, he clearly attempted to degrade us in this panel this morning, and I won't tolerate it. So, if you felt that some of my questions were out of line, I apologize. I didn't mean them to be. I just based them on what was submitted to us in emails by crews and associates. If you're all right with your comment, if you allow me to.
Sure, if you have any comment, would you like to mention?
Just, you know, we always appreciate the opportunity to work with the county. We've had great working relationship over the years. Obviously, we closed the transaction. We worked on several years together. We certainly wanted the opportunity. You know, we viewed the courthouse as historic, you know, the work that you're going to be doing on that. It's been a long year, obviously, doing multiple proposals, and we just want you to know, we put our best proposal forward, something we really wanted to do, but we, you know, also understand that you all have to make a decision based on everything that you have in front of you, and I don't know, is there anything else that you want to say, Ren?
No, I just, I think we were just a little taken, we were a little bit surprised, because we had put a schedule in our proposals and our subsequent, that it was going to, that we did have to go through the legal process before we could issue bonds, and I think we were just shocked that day. We weren't prepared. We thought, we didn't know that there were going to be questions asked of us last week or the week before last. And I think we were a little bit surprised when it was kind of like, you know, we thought you could get this done sooner, and we were very clear in all of our proposals and subsequent that it was going to, we had to go through a process of the legal part being done, and we have no control over that. We just wanted to make sure that you didn't think that we were trying to switch something on you, telling you one thing, and then telling you, oh, now we can't do that. So, that was the only.
That's what I was trying to explain, that I was not saying that.
Yeah.
There were things written to us in the email, which I told Diane, make sure you There were things written to us in the email, which I told Diane, make sure you all had copies of. So, I apologize, I apologize you didn't get the copies of those, 'cause I told her specifically that you all needed copies of those before that meeting. But, but, but that's what I'm trying to explain. I was just taking things that were written in that email and posing you the questions. And I thought you had copies of the email.
No, we did. We were shocked. We came in here to do all the other deals and we were shocked.
We would just like to say to that regard that we, we were completely taken by surprise. Our understanding was we were working on the project and we had, the structure you're looking at is well-funded with various councils based on the work we did. We would have handled, if we knew it was a Q and A or another interview, which we had already gone through, we would have handled our responses. We knew if it was a competition, for instance, with our competitor, we would have handled, if we thought that we weren't hired, we were understanding you were here to approve our engagement letter, we would have handled those questions differently. We would have been, I think, we would have made a much greater effort to differentiate ourselves and the work that we've done in this area, which is unmatched at least. So, instead, what we were trying to do is to be kind of cordially answer the questions and let you know that your counsel and legal work that needs to be done was substantial, regardless of who you work with. And we were prepared to close prices of bond the day after, if necessary. But the process was going to delay your project, not the financing.
The one comment that I would have is that I apologize if, if there was any miscommunications about what the expectations were. And I think if no other effect, we will ensure that doesn't happen again.
Thank you. Well, we were saying we wanted to, our relationship is very important with you all. So, we don't wanna walk out.
As is ours to yours. That's why I even brought this issue up because I, I got feedback that, that I was doing something that I was not doing.
I think it's just more the.
The way it was handled, the way, yeah, we were just caught off completely off guard.
If I could say for.
Blindsided.
Yeah, I apologize for cutting off, but for clarification, and it was unfortunate you weren't at the, no one was at the committee of the, I keep on committee of the whole. The work session, we had a lot of questions and even when we left, it was still technically up in the air and it was stated and we didn't get back to you clear enough that there were some questions still to be answered. And it's a miscommunicate, I mean, and what we have learned from the County Commission now is we've made it very clear that we will only do anything when it's done in the works. That was part our fault too, so, and I think all three of us.
And what's done, and what's on the agenda, which I can make.
Yeah, and all three of us.
It will be on the agenda.
And there was confusion. So, again, that was, that was the specific, so that's where, you know, I would apologize because there was still confusion, it was still up in the air, there were still some questions to be answered. And we have learned from this and hopefully this won't happen again, not to you, but to anyone else. It was just a mix-up.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And I just wanna, one other clarification for the record that's in this document before we move it, is just so we're both on the same wavelength, Tom Ammon's associate had mentioned he would have it done before March 15th. And clearly, the holding period is by March 18th. So, just so both parties are.
You wanna ask Tom Ammon's that question?
Yeah, it was right there. I can see him looking at it.
I know, that's why I thought maybe you wanna ask him a question.
Well, I just wanna make sure that, since you didn't hear, but since Cruz is saying they're gonna have it within the 90 days, which is by March 15th, and you're saying 90 days, then everyone's in agreement. So, we just, I want that as part of the record, that we are still, even though we were delayed a week, in, in the time period, in that 90-day, what's it called?
We have a. Bit hole.
Bit hole. The 90-day pit hole. Okay. And I just wanna clarify that for the record, so anyone with a judge that's having any questions on that.
And in fairness to Piper Jeffrey, they would have met the same time.
Oh, I know they would, yeah.
Legal issues, as Joe said, the legal issues are more.
Yes.
Are more our, are more the timing problem than the actual financing. And they can, no one can sell bonds until we've had the ordinances enacted, et cetera.
Okay, so, a move that we move forward on the engagement letter for Cruz and Associates.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Lowest bidder, notice of lowest qualified bidder.
That's the one, that letter he just talked about. It doesn't say that we're going into a contract just to notify Maserah that they are the lowest qualified bidder, so they know that soon as we get all the funding in place, we can engage in a contract.
Has this been run by Tom?
I, I actually drafted it. I drafted it, yeah.
Yeah, I read it.
Tom, Tom, Tom Pott sent Bill something and Bill sent it to Tom. Tom was busy with UTC. I, I redrafted it. And the reason that, there's no reflection on Tom Pott. Notice of award, notice of intent, and lowest qualified bidder, those, those are terms of art and they have certain legal connotations with it.
Right.
So, we didn't wanna give them a conditional notice of intent to award it 90 days out, but give them some, give them some, allow them to feel like we're, we are moving forward.
I have a motion.
So move.
Do we authorize the President to sign?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now we go back to Mr. Ammon.
Sure. I'm gonna suggest that you all go into executive session to, before, before we take up the final consideration of the bond order, there's a couple of things that we should go over. I think it'd be most appropriate to do that in executive session. It relates to attorney-client privilege-type items. So, that would be my recommendation, that you all adjourn into executive session to take those up and then come back and then we can go over formally the consideration of the bond order.
Let me ask you a question, Tom. That's probably gonna take up a little bit of time, I would imagine. Do you have any problem for us expiring the rest of our agenda here so that we don't hold people up to wait to come back in? And then we, then we can go into executive session on the matters that you brought forth. So, let's move on to new business.
Obviously, you're allowed to do, dissolve technical.
Oh, dissolve technical review board.
Yeah, what, what we wanna do is we did the committee for the ballpark for the Technical Advisory Committee, and that was so that all the plans could be put together. And it was the way that everybody for the County Commission, who you put on there, we seen fit that we got everything in place. Now that everything is in place and it's in the hands of the architect, we don't need the Technical Advisory Committee anymore because there's not gonna be any changes as the way it's gonna be built. So, it's just like the federal building, the Justice Center, we have a contractor and we have, you know, their WVU and we have me representing the county, if that's the way, that's what they ask. That, you know, so we don't need everybody at the meeting trying to change things because we put everything in perspective the way that everybody wanted.
So, do we dissolve this and then create another committee, or we dissolve this and that's it?
It's it. We just have one representative, WVU has one representative and we have a contractor.
But there is a committee.
So, you'll be our representative?
Yes. Because there's, there is no changes anymore. Once it's sent to the blueprints or getting made, there is gonna be no changes on the structure anymore.
So, nothing for the Technical Review Committee to do? You'll just oversee it on behalf, as you do for all our projects?
For the commission.
Right. I'd move we dissolve the Technical Review Committee, design, build process for the ballpark.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Just on, on all your behalf, you know, like, we had the ballpark representative, Joe, uh, Joe, he's here. And, you know, we wanted to make sure we got all the sound stuff in place and all that, the plugs and everything, and that was done. We have the covering over the seating, the playground, the picnic little area there is gonna be there on the outside of the gate so it can be used even when the ballpark is not in use. So, all that's been put into the plans and the contracts, so it's all gonna be done in that direction.
Have, have we taken the posters that were made up and put down in the lobby area of the courthouse?
It was there the second day you guys come back from Charleston.
Thank you.
I would like to make another motion, that we, a paraleto for the President to sign under all three of his design, thanking each member of the Technical Review Committee for their work and effort on this project.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Anything else? New business. One new business? Renata? Port from the County Commissioner. I, let me just start off, there's just one concern that I have, is that there was an article in the paper about 911 fees. And I think since then, there's been some clarification made by Mike Wolf, that this reported increase from, what, $1.30 to $4 is certainly has not been approved. And we, at least I would intend that we'll have an agenda that will scrutinize the requested increase in that fee. Like all other budget matters, we will want the projections of where the increased funding is needed, how it will be spent, and exactly what is the amount that we need to raise. We certainly should have learned our lesson with the property taxes here a year or so ago. And we, we need to keep a watchful eye on public funds and certainly, I'm very strongly opposed to any new taxes. So, there has to be a strong justification to increase costs to the taxpayer of this county for any issue. And I just wanna issue that assurance to the public that we're not gonna pass increases, this commission is not gonna pass increases. I think the other commissioners and I are in agreement that it's gonna serve the public interest or we're just not gonna do it. And I just want, wanna, wanna make that a matter of record. I think it's important that people understand that we're not a tax-and-spend county commission. Other than that, Commissioner Cal.
Okay, a couple of things. I'll start with the 911 fee issue as well, because I just came back from Charleston, as I said previously. That increasing 911 fee, 911 fees is on the agenda of the legislature down there for cell phones and, and demand, so they might be decreasing, increasing it. Also, as I said earlier, we need, we need to be very cognizant of the economic condition in the, in the state and in this country. The, the, the Fed's money has, and it was reported, the Fed's money has virtually been shut down. We're not gonna, we're not gonna get the federal funds. The state, they're having difficulties, great shortfalls, and they're looking at different money sources, primarily taking from the county and giving it to the state. We don't know what, what that effect's gonna be, but, so, so we, and, and one of the things in the County Commissioner Association and every commission, commissioner talks about, and it's important to, to keep this in mind. And it's not true, it's not true for most of our, most of our elected officials. And I say most, not all, but most, is the lack of respect by constitutional officers for the difficult job that the three commissioners have in trying to keep taxes down, provide the necessary services and give the funding. Now, I see the sheriff here and I say he's probably one of the best to, to work with us and, and help us understand and accepts, and I accept his respect for us in, in that very difficult task. I also let you know that you're the president of that Western Union Association of County. I'm now board representative on, on that, so I'll be down there to, to watch you. You can teach me the ropes.
Do you, do you have anything that, and I should have ventured this, I didn't earlier, but you said it on the meeting of the assessor and the tax department?
Oh, yes, I hadn't got to that yet.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That was down on my list. And anyway, that, that is probably one of the most difficult tasks of any elected official at the county level, is the commission job trying to balance the taxes with the financial deeds. And it, I, I, I told, when we had that discussion, I told the group that, that generally, we had a very, very good working relationship with our constitutional officers and that we are respected and, and treated well and in, in accepting the fact that we do have a very difficult job there. So, we have funding obligations, it's gonna continue, and we gotta be, we gotta be very cognizant of that. And I think Commissioner Bartolo said it well, I mean, we are, we are very, very careful about where the money goes and how it's being spent. And most importantly, we want to make sure that the people, all the people, Montague County knows where the money's gone and why it's gone there. The, I would also, this is, this is the third time that I've heard this from the judges. So, I'm gonna make it a formal motion, because I've requested this in the past, but I wanna make it a motion. I would like to make a motion that a copy of our agenda be sent to the judges along with all the other constitutional officers. They've complained about this repeatedly and I've asked that that be done, so I would move that an agenda be cop, sent to all the elected officials, including magistrates and judges.
That would be work session agenda also, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so just, yeah, I'll second that, if, making sure that the work session is put in there.
I, I think it's a void that needs closed and we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. And then the, the last thing I wanted to bring up before I went to Charleston, I went with the assessor. I don't know if our assessor music is here or not.
No, he's at Charleston.
Oh, that's right, it's down for that. They were really, they were really surprised, they were sort of taken back for a commissioner to actually show up on these board property. Did Mark tell you that, that, how they were sort of taken back?
Yes, he did. He said he appreciated the support there.
Yeah, and, you know, I basically explained to him, and I saw again in the paper, and I talked to the legislators about this down there. The way the law, the way the law is written, they talk about these percentages, the school boards all in a big penny. My position, and it's based on the, what we went through in 2012, and what we discovered was that the key to these percentages is not so much the percentage, it's the accuracy of the fair market value. What is the true accuracy of the fair market value? Their position is that it's what's in the computer. My position, it's what the Board of Review and Equalization says it is. And the way the law was written, it even goes back, I think, to March. Is that right, Sheriff?
Yes.
Yeah. And I, I firmly believe that, that a court challenge, if the, the legislature does not fix this, a court challenge would prevail on this idea that they're gonna cut money based on a number, based on a fair market value number that we proved in 2012, if they didn't use all the variables, if they didn't use all the power of that computer, there's artificial inflation in that program. It's not like the NADA, it's not like the NADA book where you go and you're looking at a price for a car, you got the base model, and then you add this, and you add this, you may take this away, one or two things may be taken away if it's standards that automatic, but you add this, you add this, you add this, you add this. The computer program, the way it's designed that I, that I learned, it starts with the most expensive model. And then the variables subtract down. So, if you don't use all the variables in that computer system, which I think is a great computer system, you've got artificial inflation. And I know it's complex, I, I understand it. And I try to make it as simple as I can, but I don't know if I'm qualified enough to make it simple.
If I may interject something, 'cause I think we both, I think all three of us think along the same lines on this computer program. You know, computers only do what people tell them to do. And the one thing that I think that validates our concerns and certainly invalidates the State Tax Department's position with this computer program, is that they themselves have set standards for assessor's office that property should be appraised at 90 to 110%. They have forgotten about the taxpayer. For a taxpayer to be, be assessed at 20% over value, if, if not immoral, it certainly has to be illegal, particularly when the law calls for fair market value. be illegal, particularly when the law calls for fair market value in appraisals. So I think it's inherent in the state tax department's position by their own actions, that they invalidate the basis they use to arrive at appraised values. And I think it's our job, and I think we've tried to do that as well as we can, to point that out to the state tax department, and I can assure the taxpayer that we will continue to point that out to the state tax department.
No time to send me out, well.
But I just wanted to make that to support what you're saying.
I'm glad you did, and I want to close by this. The... Our assessor's office and the staff of our assessor's office, I was greatly impressed by. And my comments down there was not to argue this legal debate. If I need to get into a room with the lawyers again, like I did two years ago, I will go argue the legal debate. But my focus was that I know that our assessor's office is working the system, finding the data, looking everything they can, so that those fair market values that are set by the computer are the true fair market values. That's what I told that committee. I know that the people at this assessor's office is committed to make those values correct and to bring the other values up in line. And so I was adamant about our commitment to supporting the assessor in that effort. About the only question I had, which was an interesting question, but it opened the door for a dissertation, like I have a tendency of doing, give a dissertation. If you ask me a question, I'm going to answer every aspect of it. But they... One of the questions, I'm not sure exactly which one asked me, but she said, "Well, when you did those 1,500-plus hearings on properties, didn't you find that most of them were accurate?" I busted out laughing. I said, "Absolutely not." Seventy-five to eighty-five percent of the properties that we heard had PF-11 errors on it. It's the data on it, they were not described right. The market, the fair market value properties were not described right, the neighborhoods were not right. There was at least, and then there was another 25% that had that artificial inflation in. And I had to explain all that. But anyway, I gave her a dissertation on that, and I'm not going to do that again. I wanted to say that, on behalf of the commission, I went down, supported our assessor's office, and they... And that we are confident that we're going to move along, that this is not going to be a problem in the future. We did get one praise. We were praised for funding this GIS system. They say that it is absolutely necessary to make that computer system work and get those neighbors right, neighborhoods right, is to know exactly where lines are and everything, so...
Just for the record, I'd certainly like to thank you for carrying out the wishes of the commission. You represent us very capably with the state tax department, and history supports that. So I thank you.
Okay, just a couple of issues. I wasn't going to talk about the assessor's situation, but I want to explain, being the new person on the block, my dilemma. I don't understand that we're, three of us, are going to have to sit for five days or six, or seven days of having Board of Equalization hearings.
At a minimum.
At a minimum. And here's my concern. My dilemma is, how do I even consider lowering doing fair market value when the state has already mandated us that if we're not at the 90%, then the school system's going to lose $2 million? So I'm being threatened by, this is my dilemma, I'm being threatened by the state saying, "If I lower these, then you're not going to make 90%, therefore this county's going to lose $2 million." That is a concern that I think the three of us think is wrong, and I believe the three of us will, actually, I believe, could take legal action if it goes to that, say, because we have to have the right to be able to look at someone coming in fairly and making a decision.
I still know where the regional jail is. I don't have any problems on there if they don't like.
Let me just add one thing.
And that's a concern.
Add one thing, Tom, is sometimes we have to be careful about what we're told, because the Board of Education went from losing $180,000 to losing $4 million. The other thing is, is that the procedure for the Board of Equalization review is that if the taxpayer presents evidence
Right.
That the appraisal is wrong, then that's all we need to change it. The tax department's threat or inference, whatever you want to take it, that if we're not at 90% or 110%, that they're going to withhold funds, well, our reaction to that remains to be demonstrated at this point. But I think what we have to rely upon is our conscience
Right.
Our ethics, and what serves the best interest of the people and the taxpayers of Montague County.
And I think the three of us are going to do that, but that's, as you said, moral dilemma. That's the dilemma that I face when everyone comes before me. The second thing, and I'm glad, again, the sheriff is here, and I'm just going to ask his advice. One of my advices is I listened to the Kay and Jim show, and numerous people were calling in about the area, which is a disaster, I know that you're having to deal with, around the Pilot Gas Station. This week, there was like four trucks broken down, there was traffic back to the interstate. I mean, it was a really bad situation. Unfortunately, the people calling, blaming the county commissioners, and I didn't even know what to say, because I don't even, you know, we have no, and you had no say, when they built that property, the pilot went in there, they were allowed to do that because that's the law, correct?
Right.
Are there any suggestions that maybe we can look at with the DOH? Because it's becoming a continuing problem. I don't know if the DOH, if they're going to have to cut out some more, take some property, but, you know, that 150 yards is a disaster, you know, in the snow, even when it isn't in the snow, it's, you know, there's more potholes there than, you know, you know, I feel like it's a way to Middle Earth, you know, if you want to walk through that. So I'm throwing it out to you, I don't know, do you have any suggestions? Because as these people are ranting and raving about the county commissioners, I mean, I'm more than willing to respond, but I don't even know what to say. Do you have any suggestions? You know what, you know the area, it's bad. Or should we come back at a later time to talk about it? I mean...
Well, really, the idea off the top of my head is absolutely a DOH issue.
Okay.
When that building went in there, I think everybody knows that Route 73 or Smithtown Road, and that intersection was never designed for that heavy traffic
Right.
That volume of traffic all the time, and that's what's breaking down that road. The other day, the specific day you're talking about, was because of snow and ice on the road, that's what caused the backup that day. We got calls about it too. And your other analogy is absolutely correct, too. It is DOH. And the only way I can look at it, and the only answer I have, is they'll have to take a look at that intersection and see if there's something they can do, put in another lane, maybe there
Right.
To get traffic through there quickly off of the interstate, have just one lane coming as an exit, and have another lane that is specifically for traffic coming out of Pilot.
Should we send...
It's a difficult situation.
Should we send a letter? I mean, is it proper to send a letter to the DOH saying, "There's been numerous complaints," and give a list of some of the problems? Because it blocks all that north-south traffic, and no one can go anywhere, and just ask them to look into it? Because the roads caving in, I mean, as you know, they probably, you know, basically needs to be dug out and redone, but that's only part of the problem. The other problem is the trucks not being able to see, they come out in the road, you have a 50 mile an hour road. So would that be permissible?
Well, you could write one individually, or one for all three of us? We could make a motion to write one for all three of us.
Yeah, and, you know, since my relationship with the DOH is so well, I'd like to do it with all three of us.
Okay.
If I can move that up, work on writing a letter, voicing our concerns about the Pilot and that intersection.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify. I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, so at least it shows that we are trying.
Anything else?
Yeah, the third thing is, Friday, I attended my first and hopefully last trial that was just a horrible tragedy that affected, you know, our county, our school system, and our community. And with the sheriff and the chief here, and Gary, I don't see him, I want to publicly say how honored I was, though, the professionalism that the bailiffs were, how they monitored the situation, clearly showed concerns and feelings towards all parties involved, and also kept a very professional mood. It was bad and tough enough being there. And I personally want to thank you, and to please, I want to publicly thank your bailiffs and the way it was handled. I really, it wasn't a good situation, but the only thing I can say positive was how it was handled, how the meter was handled, and how the community dealt with it. And then, again, I want to thank you, and please pass that on to all the officers and bailiffs, because that was an exceptional thing that you did. And the final thing, this is a real short one, I'm asking that the sheriff, Kelly, and the representative from the assessor's office be at our meeting today at 3 o'clock. I believe we need you all there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lectures officials, sheriff.
Quickly, I promise. You all got a letter from the Governor's Highway Safety Program about a grant that we received? Did you get it?
Yeah, I saw.
I'll give you a copy, it was addressed to you, but...
Oh, it was?
Maybe they didn't deliver.
You're still delivering the elder, that's...
That's all.
Again.
But I just kind of really wanted to explain what this was. It's a $3,000 grant that we got from the Governor's Highway Safety, and it gives you the technical term of what they were, or what we're purchasing with that grant. And it's called CDRDLC. It's a crash data retrieval base kit, accessory kit, and software. What that does is, whenever we have accidents where we have multiple injuries or deaths involved, this software, we can plug into a computer system of each of the cars or the car involved in the accident, and retrieve data, such as the speed that the car was traveling at the time of the accident, things like that. So this is going to be a very good investigative tool that we can use along with what our accident reconstructionists do. And the end of this month, well, actually, Friday, we will be having another deputy graduating from Accident Reconstruction School. It's a month-long school. He's been at the Professional Development Center in Charleston at the State Police Academy this month to get that training. So Deputy Steve McRobey will be another Accident Reconstructionist for us. And because they were looking to fill a slot, they didn't charge us anything for him to get out and do the training, other than the cost of the classes, staying at the academy, and everything else was free. So, and I think Chief Palmer wanted to mention something that, about the Maintenance Department...
Just real quick, I just need to shout out to Bobby and his people, Maintenance. I had some work done in my office, and his people are very professional, very skilled in what they did. I think it's a credit to the skilled laborers that he hires. If we tried to contract that out, it would cost a lot of money, but they did a very good job, very professional. Very good. Assessor's office.
I just wanted to add that when the Board of Review meets, we're going over everything with all the taxpayers that call, and if they have a certified appraisal, we take that into consideration before we refer them to you. So I don't think you're going to have that many come over here, because we're working most of it out over there.
I think the combination of that, and I think under Mark Music's leadership, your office over there has reached out to the taxpayer.
Thank you.
And I really think that that's going to be a tremendous plus, because people won't feel like, "How do these people even know what kind of a house I have, and they're ever going to come and talk to me?" So...
Right, well, we have deputies going door-to-door, and Mark goes out himself when we get a phone call. And he's very appreciative of the support that the commission is giving him.
Well, you know, I think the state tax department has put him in a little bit of a predicament, but we understand that. And I think all of us are in agreement, we're going to continue to work with Mark, because we think that he has some very honest intent to serve the taxpayers' best interest. But we thank you for what you all are doing.
Thank you.
Kelly?
No, not today, thank you.
Chief? Nothing? Members of the public? Oh, wait a minute, let me back up. Bobby, you have anything?
I just wanted to say one thing. Thank Perry for what he said, but I'd like to just recognize my guys' themselves. I know it's their job to clear the snow and ice and keep all these buildings running and clear, so people doesn't fall. And I know most people think that that's their job, but, you know, they're the ones that have to work outside in the minus temperatures where everybody else is in a warm. So I just wanted to make it known that those guys have been working well, and as everybody can see, our parking lots and sidewalks was cleared before everybody else. So I'd just like to recognize them for that.
Their efforts, I'm sure, are appreciated by whoever's benefits from them. But I think what's really critically important, and I think it's for people to know, that you and your department is saving the taxpayers of this county money.
Appreciate that.
Tax dollars are being saved with every project that they're able to complete, and I think that speaks well, you and your department.
Thank you.
Janet?
I'm just going to stop.
Is there anything else? Janet, anything? The public, any members of the public have any comments? No comments by members of the public, then I will entertain a motion if we move into executive session. I would suggest that we take a 10-minute break to give the media a chance to talk to anybody they want to, and don't have to wait around.
Move to go in executive session pursuant to Attorney Commission.
Fine, prove it.
Fine, prove it.
And I have a motion and a second, move into executive session. All in favor, signify. I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will adjourn for 10 minutes.
Don't know. I would assume a more...
We're back in regular session, out of executive session. And Paul, on the agenda here, first item of consideration is consideration of adoption of Bond Authorizing Resolution Order.
Excuse me. Janet, do we have to make a motion and a second to get out of executive?
Move to go out of executive session.
Second.
Shame on me. I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify. I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we're out of executive session. Motion passed. Mr. Aiman?
Thank you. So I'm presenting primarily the same information that we went over two weeks ago when I was before you for the, to go over the Bond Authorizing Order. You have a packet of information I handed out to you. One item is the transaction summary, and then we've got a Bond Authorizing Resolution Order. We've got all the numbers for the different bond issues, just for your information purposes. And then we've got two resolutions relating to these projects that we'll take up and I'll explain. But just to reiterate what we've gone over before, we now have, you know, all the final numbers on the bond issues, you know, we've sharpened our pencils, we've got all the i's dotted and t's crossed, and you'll see at the top there, the $22,165 for the ballpark bonds, $21,830 for the interchange excise tax bonds, $670 for the other piece of the interchange bonds, and then the $9,605 tax increment revenue bonds, the other piece of the interchange, and then the $4,515 for the infrastructure project. You know, we've got the same information here with respect to the districts that we've gone over previously. Just to reiterate the structures, the ballpark bonds have a variable interest rate. For the first five years, we've got a floor of 2.5% and a ceiling of 4%. So it'll be a daily floating rate, which, oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Which WVU feels will create the lowest interest cost on the financing of this project. The final maturity date on all series of the excise tax bonds is June 1, 2043. The redemptions will start in June of 2017, as far as any available revenues from the sales taxes in the district are applied first, you know, to be scheduled interest payments semi-amending for that debt rate that we went over. Any amounts... semi-amending for that debt rate that we went over. Any amounts of revenues that are available after paying the scheduled interest and after paying the administrative expenses of the district are applied to repay the principal of the bonds. So that's the basic way in which the bonds from available revenues in the district, if the district performs well, there'll be surplus revenues above the interest payments. That will pay down the principal of the bonds over time. We have a scheduled mandatory redemption of the principal amounts, which will start in 2019, so that even if those revenues weren't sufficient to start paying down the principal, we'll nonetheless have mandatory payments of the principal that will need to be made. If the revenue's not sufficient for the sales taxes, we have this lease arrangement with WVU where they pay an additional rent that makes up the gap. 50% of the revenues are dedicated to the ballpark bonds. The other 50% from the excise taxes are dedicated to the two series of the interchange bonds. With the Series C bonds being the smaller amount and wanting, at a higher rate, wanting to pay that off first and leave the remaining revenues to pay off the interchange project, the 50% for the interchange side of it would be applied first to pay down the C bonds and pay those off, which they're scheduled to pay off, I believe, in 2016. And then that would leave the remaining revenues then, after paid off in their entirety, to be applied to repay the B bonds. The United Bank is purchasing the ballpark bonds, the Division of Highways, the bonds are being privately placed with the Division of Highways for both series of the interchange bonds. And then for the C excise tax and B property taxes, those are being placed with Mon, the developer for the project. You'll see that description there, and you'll see a rendering of the ballpark. And then the interchange piece of it and the additional pad sites and extension of Town Center Drive, and the additional development that would be opened up by the combination of the interchange project and the infrastructure project that would extend the road. So as I mentioned before, the interchange piece of it, DOA, the West Virginia Department of Transportation, Division of Highways, is paying, or will be the party to the design-build contract. They will pay all those construction costs. The bond payments when made would be a means to reimburse them over time through those payments, or costs that they have expended to build that interchange. The infrastructure portion of the project is, you know, utilities and roadwork, infrastructure that's needed to support the additional development at the Town Center and the area of the ballpark and connecting to the new interchange. We're actually proposing to close the transaction this Thursday, signing all, you know, the documentation later today. All of the bonds are being privately placed with the purchasers that described, not rated bonds. All of the bonds are structured in that way that, you know, they're mature and full at the final maturity, with the exception of the ballpark bonds, which have that mandatory redemption schedule. All the bonds at the option of the county can be paid off early. If you want to refinance, issue additional bonds to refinance without penalty at any time. There are limitations on the ability to issue additional bonds in this district. You basically have to get the consent of the other bondholders to do that, because it would affect their revenue streams. We have the placement agents, which have done a wonderful job working with Monview, the master developer, to prepare a revenue projection for the district and a development schedule, so that based on, you know, future development that's expected in the district, you know, these are the revenues that we think would be generated by that development and therefore available to repay the bonds. You've got your financing team, which is still intact, all those parties that we've gone over. For each, for the main security document for all the bond issues is a trust indenture. And there's a trust indenture for the ballpark bonds, there's a separate indenture for the other two interchange bonds, and then a third indenture for the two series of property tax bonds. The revenues, as I mentioned, excise taxes, 50% are dedicated to the ballpark, the other 50% to the two interchange bonds. On the property tax bond issues, it's solely the incremental increases in property tax revenues that are generated by the development in the district. And the split of the application of those revenues is based upon the principal amount of the bonds. So higher principal amount, they get a higher allocation of the revenues to repay those bonds. They're all structured as drawdown bonds, so that only as costs are incurred to actually pay the project costs are the principal amount of the bonds utilized, and interest accrues only on the drawdowns. So, you know, the county is not being charged for all the interest on the entire principal amount at closing. You're able to draw that down and only be charged on that portion. There's a reserve fund in place for the ballpark bonds, equal to 12 months of interest. So if the revenues aren't sufficient, that reserve fund would be used to make the scheduled payments. And then if the reserve fund is utilized, WVU would make additional rent payments. That would go into a special fund that would then be used to replenish the reserve if the reserve were ever completely depleted. That is the basic structure of the bond issues. The official action of the county commission, which would approve the issuance of all those five series of bonds, and the entering into of the trust indentures, which are the primary security documents, and the development agreements with the WVU, with the Department of Highways, and with Monview, that allow them to act as developer to carry out the construction of these projects for the county commission, utilizing the bond proceeds. Approve all of those arrangements, and also approves the basic form of all the main closing documents.
Do we need to give you approval of each of those individually, or as a group?
No, I want to briefly go through the order, and then the order is self-contained in approving everything for the transaction.
All the...
All the main documents.
This might be the time that we discuss the interchange and the status of the DOH before we start to get that order, as you brought up the last time.
Sure.
Okay. As he advised us last time, the DOH is totally behind the interchange. They're in the process, they're in the process of finalizing everything. They had the public hearing two weeks ago. After that public hearing, there's a 30-day comment period that people can make comments. I had asked Greg Bailey, the engineer and the primary person up here for the public hearing, for the DOH, that he advised us before we vote on this, as to what came out of the public comments and what the status was. He sent me, he sent me an email that I read last night when I got home late, that said that the public comments to date have been positive. Most of the comments were more questions as to how the traffic was going to feed in. He saw nothing in the public comments that would suggest that it would be a deterrent to the federal Department of Highways approval, which is what this public hearing is for, is to get that final okay on this. And he saw nothing in there that any of them sees as anything that will prevent this interchange from going through. And finally, that a large portion of the comments were urging us, the elected officials, to continue our work with the DOH to help dissolve, resolve transportation problems in Montague County. So I thought that was a good note, because here we passed the resolution, or a motion Tom brought up about a letter about the pilot. So we're already doing what the public is saying they expect us to do, to help work with the DOH. So I had, I'd asked, he sent me this information so I could report it to the commission, that they still feel confident there's not going to be any deterrent to that interchange going in.
Good.
So as the commissioner stated, although we can have no definitive assurances from the DOH, I mean, they have the statutory process, the NEPA process that they have to go through, that involves the public hearing, and then the comment period, and then they evaluate all that information and determine whether they can, you know, get the final approvals to move forward. And they feel pretty comfortable, based at least on the public hearing and the comment period that's run this far, that they're not, you know, getting any material adverse feedback that makes them uncomfortable. So that although the county is, you know, when we close on these bond issues, you know, you'll be committed on the ballpark on all phases of the project, we can't have certainty that the interchange final approvals will have come through at that point in time. With respect to the order, I'll just hit the highlights. We've been through it at the last meeting. You know, it, section two is approving the issuance of the ballpark bonds, and the main terms, you know, the principal amount, $22,165, that variable interest rate that we talked about, and the maturity date of June 1, 2043. The Series B for the interchange, $21,830 at that 3.25% rate, with the maturity of June 1, 2043 as well. The C excise tax bonds, that smaller portion, $670,000, 6% rate, same principal maturity. And then on the property tax bonds, the A series for the interchange project, $9,605, at the same 3.25% rate for the other excise tax bonds for the interchange. The June 1, 2042 maturity, a year shorter because statutorily that district was created a little bit before the excise tax district, and therefore we can't, we have a 30-year life on that district, and that's as far as we can go out. The Series B property tax bonds, that's for the infrastructure project, $4,515, 6% rate, that same June 1, 2042 maturity. And then there's an approval for the different security for all the bond issues. As I mentioned before, 50% of the excise tax revenues for the ballpark bonds, also the additional rent payments from WVU pursuant to the lease agreement, or the lease arrangement. The other two series of excise tax bonds for the interchange project has that, the other 50% of revenue is dedicated to repayment of those two issues, with first priority going to the C bonds to pay those off, and then allow the funds, the 50%, to be available for the B bonds. The two series of property tax bonds, it's a split of solely repayable from incremental increases in property taxes. Those are the property tax revenues, the TIF revenues, to be applied to the two series based upon the principal amount, so that there's an equitable application. You've got the main documents of the transaction, which are the trust, starting in section five, approval of the ballpark indenture. And that is the arrangement I described where it's a document between the county and the bond trustee, where the trustee, you know, acts as a fiduciary to collect these revenue streams on a monthly basis from the county, and make the payments to the bondholders. It's the same basic structure under each indenture. With the excise tax bonds, you have to monthly, the county will be required to monthly requisition the fund balance that's at the treasurer's office, and ask that that be sent by the treasurer's office to the bond trustee. Approximately by the 20th of every month, you should know what's in the account, and then you then have to the end of the month to request that that transfer be made. That way the monies are there with the bond trustee. With the property tax revenues, that's, that TIF revenue fund is a local account of the county commission for this district. And shortly before the bond payments, I think it's May, on or before May 15th and November 15th of every year, you agree to transfer whatever's in that TIF fund to the bond trustee, so they can make the payments on the bonds. So that's the trust indentures. And then it approves the development agreements. Of course, you have a master development agreement with Monview, where they agree to serve as the, you know, overarching developer for the entire, for both districts and for the entire project. Have a separate agreement for that. You have an agreement, a ballpark development agreement with WVU and with your master developer, where WVU agrees to build the ballpark, and the county agrees to utilize the proceeds of the bonds to pay for those costs. The interchange development agreement with Department of Highways and master developer and the bond trustee, where DOH agrees to this arrangement where they will build the interchange and finance those costs and be reimbursed from payments on the bonds. And then that infrastructure agreement with Monview, where you all agree to issue the bonds to pay for the cost of that infrastructure work, and they agree to carry that out, to construct those improvements. You've got bond purchase agreements for each and all of the series of bonds to be approved as to the form of those documents. You've got that ground lease arrangement with WVU, where they will own the real property for the ballpark and lease that to the county commission. The lease purchase agreement, where the county owns the improvements and leases those improvements to WVU, and they agree to make this additional rent payment that is available if the revenues aren't sufficient to pay the bonds. The only change on that document from what I had submitted in the packet when I was up here two weeks ago, is we've got, I distributed a black line, and I wanted to just go over a couple items briefly with you. You can see some changes that are made in characterizing the lease purchase arrangement with respect to the ballpark. And then on, the only open item that we had on the agreement was the scheduled lease payments. And we have talked about different structures as to what that might be over time, and it's had different iterations. But as WVU is meeting and making their final arrangements with the minor league team, they're getting a more concrete structure as to, you know, how that operation and arrangement would work as between them and the minor league team. So they are able now to provide, you know, with a lease payment structure, which they feel will work best for the ballpark, based on their agreement with the minor league club. And what they've agreed to do is that their arrangement, WVU's arrangement with the minor league team will have a, some fixed rental payment amount, that the minor league club would agree to pay to WVU, and there will also be a bonus rental structure. Right now, it's looking as though that would be based on revenues in the ballpark, so that if those revenues are over a certain level, WVU would be able to share in those profits with the club. What WVU is willing to do is, in this agreement, provide that the annual lease payment would be such that they would pass along all of the rental, you know, fixed rental and bonus rental compensation that they get from the minor league club to the county commission. And they'll also agree that to a fixed minimum amount for that compensation to be at least $25,000, so that the county gets at least $25,000 every year as a fixed rental payment from WVU for their leasing of the ballpark under the agreement. Any questions about any of that? The only other things are, there's a, also is a use agreement for the ballpark, and... The only other things are, there's a, also is a use agreement for the ballpark, and this is designed to extend beyond the life of the bonds and to be an agreement that's a long-term agreement. And the WVU agrees that they will undertake the responsibility to operate and maintain the ballpark. Now, they may do that through other arrangements with third parties, a minor league playing, a minor league ball club or possibly other parties. It provides for the establishment of a scheduling committee where the county, the town of Granville and WVU would each have the ability to appoint representatives to this committee. Once the priority use for baseball is established with, by the minor league club and WVU and any other intercollegiate program that's utilizing the park, once we know what the open dates are, then the scheduling committee would meet and schedule what's called town and county events for, you know, where the ballpark could be utilized for, you know, any community event that the town of Granville or the county would like to see the ballpark used for. And that would be rent-free for a town or county event. There's also provisions for, you know, how revenues would be split. And for town and county events, the county would have the ability to share and concession revenues at the ballpark, also any parking revenues at the ballpark. You get any, any ticket sales, you have the right to, you know, those payments in their entirety. There's some sharing of revenues with respect to parking and concession rights and things like that because WVU maintains sole rights to sell food and beverage at the ballpark. There's an agreement in there, I know it was important to you all that, that they have a commitment to, that the ballpark be affordable, you know, that the pricing structure be affordable for families and residents of the county and the state. There's a provision in there that provides that they'll make every effort to make the events affordable and the pricing structure affordable. That's, any questions on that, that arrangement? The rest of it is mainly authorizing the president of the commission to sign all the closing documents and for the commission and its employees to, you know, gives them authority to carry out all of the terms of the agreements.
I'd like to say, Tom, that it's been a lot of months, and someone sitting back here for the first time or watching on YouTube or the film, they might think, well, wow, you know, look at all this stuff, you know? We've got to do all, we've been working on this stuff for, for months and months and talking about months and months, and I wanted to take the opportunity to commend you for keeping the commissioners, these three commissioners and the prior commissioner we had, because it started a long time ago, all our individual concerns in the forefront. And I think you've done an admirable job in dealing with all aspects of the lease arrangements, use arrangements, and the cost, keeping the cost down, all those issues, actually too numerous to mention, that, that protects the, the ball field, not only for its primary use, but for the citizens of this county to use to, to make a better, better, better life in this community.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. I also would like to say that I really truly feel that every member that was on this team, you know, the placement agents, Piper Jaffray, the developer Mondview, Jason Donahue, Brian Helmick and Carrie Cecil with Spillman and representing Mondview, the developer in this, and I'm sure I'm going to miss a bunch of people.
All the WVU people.
All the WVU folks, the people, the folks at Department of Highways, Greg Bailey and all, I mean, they've been great to work with. Without, I think perhaps if any member of this team had been replaced with someone else, I don't know that this project would have gotten to where it is right now. So I really-
Does that include us?
Yeah.
You know, one point needs made, that although this is a very significant project, in, in the way that it's been cooperative between university, between developer, even Jason and, and the county commission. And I, and I think what we need to make sure we don't forget is that we broke new ground with this project in terms of working relationships, Piper Jaffe. And I think we're going to find that the future will tell us that this project had a significant impact on future relationships and working together and, and being able to, through cooperative efforts, accomplish more than any of us could individually.
Absolutely. Nope, I'm ready to move on.
Okay. You want to frame our motion for us?
I was going to move that we adopt the resolution order as presented.
Good.
And authorize the president of the-
You're not going to restate everything?
And authorize the president to sign the necessary document, let's complete closure of this.
That means I can show up at 5:00. I have a motion and a second, on favor, signify, I'm saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Just a couple of things I'd like. There are two reimbursement resolutions. These are just sort of prophylactic-type measures that, these relate to the possibility down the road, you know, all these bonds are being issued on a taxable basis for various reasons. There may be opportunities down the road to refinance these bonds on a tax-exent basis, and this would give just the county the flexibility to be able to do that down the road. You've got one resolution for the ballpark that allows for expenditures relating to the ballpark that have been incurred up to this point in time. I think there's a, like a 60-day look back to be paid out of the, and that will be paid going forward to be reimbursed out of the proceeds of the bonds. Same arrangement for the interchange, costs relating to the interchange that have been incurred up to this point, that will be incurred going forward and paid by DOH that, you know, the bonds can be used to reimburse those costs.
Any motion on that?
On both please.
I move that we approve and authorize the reimbursement resolutions on these two projects.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, on favor, signify, I'm saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Anything else?
I think I'll do it. Thank you.
You might want to let Jason and Brian know if they want to have anything to comment on or even.
Do I have to do that? No, I'm only joking. Everyone knows that. Any comment, Brian?
Just thank you so much. It's been wonderful to get to this stage, and you guys have been instrumental in changing the future of, quite honestly, Montague County, but the state. The comments we get out of the state capital is that this is a model that the rest of the state ought to be modeling, modeling their projects after and grows after.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jason?
I would, I got-
I knew you were going to say that.
You know, from, from, I guess the folks that started with an idea, I mean, it was just an idea. And to work as closely as we have with everybody, including the commission, and to explain how it could work and how it could benefit different parties and different groups and to get different municipalities and different county, the county commission and WVU to get everybody to go and make this happen and to see it come to fruition today, I have to tell you, is just extremely gratifying. And I believe in the project, I've always believed in the project, and I offer our sincere thanks and appreciation to the effort that you guys put into it because it, it, it was a hard process, it should be a hard process, we've always contended that, because it's the public tax dollars and that should be protected. And we respect that, and, and, and we're going to work as hard, and I hope you guys have seen, that we're going to work as hard as we can from the developer side to make sure those tax dollars are spent as wisely as possible and as efficiently as possible so that we can accomplish the goals that we agreed to do. So personally, on behalf of Mondview, I just can't say enough about how much we appreciate your all's willingness to roll up your sleeves, work with us, support us, fight with us when necessary, fight on our side when necessary. And, and, and I believe, I just told Brian, you know, I've not been a longtime resident in Montague County, but I do believe that it's helped lay the foundation for other things and that I think that we can realize a phenomenal potential by doing other things the way we did this deal. And I think that we can all be a part of that, so thank you.
Were you here when I reported on Greg Bailey's email, that a lot of comments was that they expect us three to continue to work, not only throughout the county but on the west side and make the west side development?
I, I, you know, here's, here's, here's the bottom line. Things don't get done unless they get done. I mean, you can talk yourself in a circle, but unless it actually, somebody works to make it happen, it's not going to happen. And so I think that we see the fruits of the labor when we put forth the effort to make something happen. So I think we can make other things happen. And not just on this project, but, you know, throughout the county, and then, and I think Brian's right, throughout the state. I think we have a moral obligation to lead for the community as well as the state for a bunch of reasons. But I would, heartfelt, you know, with all the joy I can tell you, I'm thrilled to death and, and very appreciative.
Thank you, Jason. Joe, you have a comment or a remark?
Again, it's two years since we were first approached about the idea. It's been far and away be the most complicated transaction we've had to work on. A lot of moving parts, but it's a real tribute to the team, to the county, your staff, the assessor's office, you know, to get to this point with its complexities and very favorable bond terms, you know, we, again, we just want to thank you for having that opportunity. We just made a very successful product, project. And, and as Leah O'Brien said, we think it's a model for other economic development projects in the state, one that we're even maybe looking at that, you know, to, to, I think, get, get the various bodies to cooperate in the state, the county, university, and others. It was a terrific project to work on. I want to thank you for having the opportunity to work on it as your placement agent.
Yeah, see, I just wanted to reiterate, I want to thank the commission because without you, this would not have been possible, and, and we're real appreciative, and I can't wait to see the first ball, the ball out of the ballpark. I don't know who to let do that, but maybe one of you, I don't know.
We're going to draft Bill to do it.
Well, I've already asked that we be employed as auditors to sample the concessions. To make sure, make sure that the paying public has a good viewing, observation points. I haven't got a response yet, but.
But if we throw it in, we might have to be a tag throw.
Yeah, I know.
To me and I'll throw it to Tom, and Tom will throw it across the plane.
Thank you all.
I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I'm going to do it anyway.
Jason, thank you.
Thank you. We waiting for German?
Any other comments?
I move with German.
Second.
I'm moving for German in a second, on favor, signify, I'm saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Better not be. We're done.
We're done.